I'd like to call to order the planning board meeting of January 5th, 2023. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all [inaudible].
The town of Burlington will be holding the January 5th, 2023, meeting of the Planning Board as a hybrid meeting due to the current state of emergency due to the COVID-19 virus. As such, the governor issued an executive order on March 12th, 2020, authorizing remote meetings under General Law Code 30A, Section 20, and extended by Chapter 22 of the Acts of 2022, including permitting remote meetings and participation until March 31st, 2023.
As always, members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in any specific item on this agenda should make plans for an in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. Those seeking to participate remotely may do so via the following: townofberlingtonwebx.com/townofberlincoln. And the meeting number, the access code, is 2342-652-8253, and the password is 1645. And if you want to join by phone, it's 1617-315-0704. This meeting is also being broadcast on the BCAT Government Channel, which can be found on Comcast 99, RCN 15, Verizon 41, and is streamed on Facebook Live via the BCAT Facebook page. The public will be able to make comments during the hearing, during the time for public comment. Questions can be asked via WebEx and the WebEx Q&amp;A function. All persons wishing to ask a question or make a comment must identify themselves.
Thank you, Caleb. We have a few items being continued off of tonight's agenda. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take items 7C, 7D, 7E, and 7F together and out of order for discussion purposes, also 7G.
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Item C is a continued public hearing. Application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.2.7.4 Laboratories Engaged in Research, Experimental, and Testing Activities, Including but Not Limited to the Fields of Chemistry, Electronics Engineering, Geology, and Non-Biologic Medicine and Physics of the Zoning Bylaws, 22 Terry Avenue, AP Terry LLC is the applicant. Item D is a continued public hearing. Application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.2.7.4.1 Life Science Laboratories Engaged in Research, Prototype Manufacturing, Experimental and Testing Activities, Including but Not Limited to the Fields of Pharmaceuticals, Biomedical Technologies and Engineering Life Science Technologies, Environmental and Biomedical Devices, Bio-Safety Level 4 BL4 Laboratories, as defined by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, are prohibited in Burlington in the zoning bylaws, 22 Terry Avenue, AP Terry LLC is the applicant. Item E is a continued public hearing. Application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.2.7.4.2 Life Science Laboratories Engaged in the Manufacturing of Life Science Technologies and Medicines for Commercial Production to the Market, Including but Not Limited to the Fields of Pharmaceuticals, Biomedical Technologies and Engineering, Life Systems Technologies, Environmental Biomedical Devices, Bio-Safety Level 4 BL4 Laboratories, as defined by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, are prohibited in Burlington in the zoning bylaws, 22 Terry Avenue, AP Terry LLC is the applicant. Item F is a continued public hearing. Application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.2.7.9 Hazardous and Toxic Materials, Chemical Use, Storage, Transport, Disposal, or Discharge of the Zoning Bylaws, 22 Terry Avenue, AP Terry LLC is the applicant. Item G is a continued public hearing. Application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.2.7.11 Generation or Storage of Hazardous Waste, limited to the volumes classified as a very small quantity generator of the zoning bylaws, 22 Terry Avenue, AP Terry LLC is the applicant.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this matters of planning board meeting on February 2nd, 2023, at the request of the applicant's attorney in an email dated January 3rd, 2022, 23.
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, moving on to citizens' time. Is there anyone on screen or in the audience that would like to discuss a matter that is not currently on our agenda? If you could please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have practiced to read this in three minutes, I will try now.
I'm sorry?
I have practiced to read this in three minutes, so it should be within three minutes.
Thank you.
My name is Sunil Prajabathy. I am a town resident and a citizen of the United States. First, I wish everyone a very happy and healthy New Year.
Thank you as well.
Great starts, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak today, and I want to speak about things that are very important, not just to me and my family, but also to our community and our country. I am here with a hope that my efforts will make our democracy and country stronger and equitable for everyone. Democracy is when government is of the people, by the people, and for the people. Unfortunately, I do not believe that the government sitting in this room is a government of the people, by the people, and for the people. I say this because my simple request has taken over two years to approve. I see this because after a long delay, I was invited to conduct a business with this government on June 16, 2022, only to be humiliated me in public while further delaying my application. That was very sad. I say this because Planning Board has imposed a long list of burdens on me for burdens without any merits, that too after a long delay. And I say this because my efforts to join this government were dismissed using undemocratic methods. I say this because my year-long efforts to voice my concerns were dismissed last month as Board would rather work with lawyers instead of working with towns' citizens to address the concerns. At this point, I have no doubt that I would have been treated differently if my demographics were different. Our First Amendment says that every citizen has the right to complain to government without fear of punishments. So I have come here to file a complaint of race discrimination against this government. However, I have not come here just to file a complaint, but I've also come here to improve things for the future. I humbly request the Board to please work with me to find a solution and improve things for the future. Thank you for allowing me to speak today.
Thank you for your time, sir. Moving on to announcements.
Yes, so the Select Board is meeting next Monday, the 9th, at 6:00 PM in this room. There will also be a hybrid meeting where there's an option to be both here and on WebEx. And one of the main meeting items is going to be the discussion regarding Windview Heights. So we just want to let that be known. The Zoning Bylaw Review Committee is meeting January 11th at 6:30, and that will be via Zoom. Martin Luther King Day is happening on January 16th, and that will mean that all town offices will be closed that day. Then Town Meeting is happening January 23rd at 7:00 PM in the Burlington High School Auditorium. And we want to announce that the Blanchard Wheeler Road Visioning Public Meeting, the first round of that, will be happening January 25th, which is a Wednesday, at 6:00 PM, and that will be all over Zoom. And there will be more information on that soon.
Great, thank you. Does anyone else have any other announcements on the board? Okay, on to matters of appointment. Item A is a continued public hearing. Application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.3.1.14-G Wireless Communications Facilities, which is subject to Section 8.4.0, shall be permitted in the wireless communications overlay districts in accordance with the map depicting the districts and the provisions of Section 1.0 of the zoning bylaws, of the zoning bylaws, 72 Center Street. Smartlink on behalf of AT&amp;T is the applicant. Good evening, sir. Would you please join us?
We also have, Liz has her hand up, I don't know if she has.
If I may, Madam Chair, I just wanted to kind of give a brief overview about this project, just to kind of bring everybody up to speed about that, if that's okay through you.
Thank you.
Sure, so we heard this application earlier on, or later on, last year, and it was continued to today. Basically, AT&amp;T is looking to swap out antennas, and so that's their proposal, and to probably upgrade some wiring. We've been in discussions with town council and, you know, talking about removal bonds or kind of lease agreements, those are all settled, we've got, they've been all handled. And we also, at the last meeting, we were looking into figuring out, making sure that the emergency generator is properly permitted, and I was able to find that it was properly permitted in the 2001 decision and remains valid. So staff has no concerns with this application, we have a special permit ready and drafted, and so that's all.
Great, thank you. I've met with staff as well and have reviewed these documents, and I'm comfortable with moving forward. Does anyone else have any questions, comments, or concerns about this application? May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter.
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I'd further like to make a motion to approve the request of Smartlink on behalf of AT&amp;T Wireless for a special permit pursuant to Section 4.3.1.14 Wireless Communication Facilities of the zoning bylaws to permit the replacement of three-panel antennas and other supporting equipment on the existing municipal water tank, and supporting equipment cabinets and emergency power on the ground adjacent to the water tank for property located in the one-family dwelling RO District and the wireless communications district located at 72 Center Street, subject to the terms and conditions contained in the facility attached.
Second. Others in favor?
Aye.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, thank you all. Have a good night.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, sir. Item B is a continued public hearing. Petition to amend the Planning Board Town Center Design Rules and Regulations submitted by the Planning Board. Hi, Liz.
Hi. So just kind of wanted to give an update on this item, because I feel like it's just kind of been hanging on our agenda for some time now, and I feel like we need to kind of clean up the agenda a little bit. So at our last meeting, we've been hearing a lot from Sally Willard, working with the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee on their signage subcommittee, and I think Kristin originally opened up this item because she wasn't anticipating that a warrant article would be filed for January on this item. Since there's a lot of work to be done with signs, obviously, I think that our best bet, and based on kind of what we've been talking about over the past couple of meetings, is to really kind of withdraw this matter for now. When we're ready, we can re-advertise it and take care of business then, but at this time, I think it makes a lot of sense for us to really just focus on kind of fixing up the draft sign section of the Town Center Design Rules and Regs. And I think that's kind of what we've been talking about previously, so that they're, you know, they're a little tighter, Sally's been doing a lot of work, I'm sure that she has, you know, ideas and things that can be done, but so that there is at least a section in the Design Rules and Regs for signage that meets Town Center Design criteria. After that is squared away, then I think it makes sense for a warrant article to go ahead with her proposal to do a signage district. And then even further along, when we have a little bit more capacity, I kind of, I definitely want to do a total overhaul of the Town Center District as a whole, and kind of hire a consultant to kind of revamp it, relook at it, see what works, see what doesn't, and see what we should be looking at to do in the future. But that's a little bit a ways down the road, so at this point, I think fixing the, or getting, approving a signage chapter, signage section for the rules and regs is kind of our first task. And I didn't, I, you know, I don't know if a subcommittee would be probably warranted for that, if anybody's interested in that, a small subcommittee, and that's kind of how I feel about that. So let me know if anybody has any questions.
Great. Thanks, Liz. Anyone have any questions, Liz? Or anyone to go?
Being a member of the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee and the Subcommittee of Signs, we've been working on signs for a long time, and really can't do any, and we picked to, we're going forward, as you may know, with signed districts rather than signs being part of the zoning district, which didn't seem to work. So we picked the Town Center as the first one, the hardest, but also the one that seems to be eliciting the most complaints. So, but then realized that we can't really go any further because there are no design regulations for signs in the Town District. So, and those design regulations are actually the Planning Board design regulations, and they were set up so they don't even have to go to Town Meeting, they're just approved by the Planning Board. I know Sally's been doing a lot of work on it, but basically she started with the draft that I believe Kristin put together, or it might have been Liz way back when, 19, what's, 2017 rather, 19 almost.
Because that's an awful long.
Yeah, it would have been an awful long. It feels that long. So I guess what I'm saying is, since they're our design rules and regulations, maybe a couple of people from a Planning Board, working along with Sally and the people on that committee, might be a good idea, and then bring them back to the Planning Board. I don't know how people feel about that, but since Sally and the committee, myself included, are really intimately involved in that, I see something, and my fear is that this signed subcommittee is working in a vacuum. Okay, so when we bring it forward, people may go, ah, my goodness, no, it doesn't work. So that's why I think, and the most important thing with signs is how they look, and that's the design regulations, at least I think it is. So I would be willing to sit on both those committees, but I think we need one or two other people from the Planning Board to do it. If, I know that Bill and Joe have been pretty vocal about Town Center, and, you know, and they'd obviously be advertised meetings, so if you couldn't make one, maybe you could make another or whatever, but what do you think, Joe, maybe?
Yeah, I mean, as long as, you know, as long as the, you know, the hours were at nighttime and, you know, evening and whatever, I could, I'd certainly be, you know.
And I know that with the regular sign subcommittee things, we've been constantly meeting just on Zoom, so it's really easy to, you know, to throw a shirt on over your pajamas. I don't know, Brenda, however you want to handle it.
Let's find out if you have pajamas.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, Bill, I don't know how.
If I can make it, yeah, happy to.
Yeah, that'd be great, if you want to do all three, and then.
All right, I'll make sure that Sally's aware of that, if she's not, oh, Sally's here.
So if you folks can work on that, we'll withdraw this, and then once we're ready, we'll bring it back. Are we comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay.
But we can still have the subcommittee to work on it.
We can still have the subcommittee and still meet and still work towards the initiative, but I think, you know, let's pull this back off the agenda so we don't have to continue.
However you want to do it.
And then we'll bring it back once we get a little bit more firm.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to withdraw this matter without prejudice.
I don't know if Sally has anything to say. Second for discussion anyways.
Good evening, Sally. Did you have something you want to share? You didn't have your hand up, but Ernie is just, he's throwing you into the mess.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am so glad that Ernie made, did the update. Yes, we felt as if we, we're kind of at a stopping point unless we move forward with the design rules and regs for the Town Center overlay, because as one member said, just as we were about to submit, well, if you allow monument signs, you know, as soon as a Town Meeting votes, it's going to, people are going to submit something, even if there are no design guidelines. And so I welcome the opportunity to work on those. We have started some work, but, you know, without, without more ideas and more formal thought on what we want to see, then there's really not a lot we can do, especially since the design rules and regs are something that the Planning Board really has to present and approve for themselves. And once that's done, I believe that we will be ready to move forward with these articles. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, so.
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, moving on. Minutes, did everyone have a chance to read the minutes?
Yes.
May I have a motion on the minutes, please?
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion that we accept the minutes of November 3rd, 2022.
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, moving on to matters of discussion. Liz?
All right. So kind of just an update on MBTA communities. I think that, again, as I've been saying in the past, we're in good shape. There is a deadline at the end of the month to just kind of give an update. It's, you know, a worksheet that's three pages long, it's a lot of just checking the box, so we're going ahead with that. I think that the mechanism that we're likely going to use is to comply for compliance as an overlay district. So when we met with the Subcommittee for MBTA Communities, which was Barbara and Bill, I think it was in December, or maybe even November, you know, you start by just looking at the map and the zoning map and seeing, you know, where do we have existing multifamily? Where do we have existing condos? What is, what are buildings that, you know, could use an upgrade or, you know, so it's just kind of, at this point, we're still just, you know, looking at the map and kind of talking about where things are going to be. I think that the approach to that, I feel like, as, you know, professionally, as, you know, is the most appropriate, is to take a hybrid approach. So there's a lot of people across the Commonwealth who are saying, well, like, we're at our 10%, we should get credit for all the, all the, all the, you know, the housing that we built for 40B, which is true. This town has done a tremendous job with being on the forefront of 40B when a lot of cities and towns are far behind their quota, and, you know, it makes me proud to work in a place that's so progressive like that. But I, you know, in order, the whole, it's not just about us and what we've done, it's about the state as a whole, so I would like to take a hybrid approach where, you know, we use some of the existing multifamily for part of the MBTA Communities District, and then look at other areas of town that could use a revamp, or we think that could be enhanced by housing. By bringing in housing, you kind of create neighborhoods, you create, you know, mixed use, it supports businesses in the area, people are working from home, they want to go down to coffee shops and work. So that's kind of my approach, and of course, I want to, you know, I want to talk to my Subcommittee, I want to hold public meetings, we want to do a whole kind of outreach campaign about it, but that's kind of my initial vision for how I think, I think that it would work for the town and how I think it should be approached. One thing I did want to mention, and I don't know if Caleb passed it out, but there was an article that I really, really encourage everybody to read.
We got it.
I emailed it to you guys, it's in Commonwealth Magazine, and it is entitled, "What the MBTA Communities Law Means for Your Town." And so it's a really good overview of what it actually means. I mean, I've been giving you guys, you know, PowerPoint presentations, and, you know, you see numbers, but this gives a really great description of what it is, what it means, and kind of how the state came up with this holistically. So I encourage you guys to read that. And then I also would like to schedule another, or just be thinking about, maybe not this meeting, but kind of thinking about when our next Subcommittee meeting would be, so I'll talk to you, Barbara and Bill, to figure that out. I'd like to wait until after Town Meeting, but kind of just getting a move on. I think that, you know, the deadline of the 31st for the check-in that we need to submit to the state is, it's not going to be a thing, so I'm comfortable with that, I'm confident that we can be compliant that way. But, yeah, I just really encourage you to read the article. And if you have any questions, please reach out to me. Questions, concerns, thoughts, out-of-the-box ideas, I'm welcome to any of it, so.
Thanks, thanks, Liz.
Can you link this article to our Facebook page?
Yes.
So to read this, please?
Yep, I will.
Barbara answered my question that I was going to ask, so I don't have any more questions. Thank you, Liz.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments? All right, moving on, the Select Board has a Town Center Sign Design Committee, and I sent out an email, and, Bill, I'm sorry, I didn't get back to you.
It's okay.
So basically what this is about is they're looking for assistance in creating the design for the Town Common Sign, the digital sign that we talked about last meeting. Ernie had volunteered, is there anyone else that wants to? If not, I'm happy to do so. Okay, Ernie, it's me and you.
I'm here.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Planning Department, open positions. Liz?
Yes, we've reopened the position, I've changed up some of the job description and requirements, I've posted it more places, our HR Director has posted it on the Town of Burlington in.
Indeed.
I know, we're moving up in the world. LinkedIn page, so if you guys want to share it, that would be amazing, if you know anybody, you know, share it to your networks, I shared it on my LinkedIn, but it's, I'm really excited. I think so far, oh, two applicants, last time I checked, we only had one, so this is like, doing great, guys. So, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna see what we can do, and, you know, this is more than we had the first time, so I'm feeling good, I'll keep you in the loop, but just wanted to let you know about that. Okay, so hopefully we get some new applicants, that'd be great. Does anyone else?
Anything that they would like to share?
One little thing, which I think most of you know, but just in case, I wanted to let you all know that the donation of Seraph, which is the nine-foot Plexiglas Blue Sculpture, the sculpture park, has been completed, so.
I saw, everybody loves it, they love it.
Through the very generous donation of the artist, Joe Ferguson, and I just wanted to let everybody know that it was finalized.
Great, looks beautiful.
The board has signed off on it if their last.
Great, thank you. Does anyone else have anything?
Just from the Recreation Commission, there's, at our last meeting, there was discussion about moving the pickleball courts permanently out of Simonds because of the neighborhood, where they make a bit of noise down there, so. I know we had talked a while ago about if, you know, certain development comes before us, maybe there's an opportunity in those developments where they may gift us, you know, some property, and we can, you know, have them build some courts for us to kind of replace the ones at Simonds. But the thought is that maybe they go temporarily up to the hockey park up there, but we've already spent $30,000 on soundproofing, that wasn't satisfactory, and moving them up still probably won't be satisfactory for the neighborhood, so $100,000 for a temporary situation doesn't make sense to me.
Sure.
So if we can kind of keep that eyes on the prize, and if anybody's talking to some of those development companies out there that, ahead of time, so that we don't get here and they're surprised with that, I think we'd appreciate that.
Good to know.
Thank you.
Liz, I think maybe we'll talk to Melissa and see if she knows of anything.
Well, I just wanted to let you know that I'm having discussions with Brendan about this, Brendan Egan, and so we're actively kind of talking about it, and, you know, I have mentioned it to different people in the community, but we will keep our eyes out, we will talk to people, so it's an ongoing issue, I haven't forgotten about it, and we've been in discussions with, at least Brendan, about it, so he knows.
Yeah, and in the kind of recent discussion with Brendan, he, with Noel Brown, he said that they didn't want to participate. They wouldn't do one court, and one court can fit, you know, within this circle here, so, and then they didn't want the public to participate from insurance reasons, I said, well, that wasn't the intent, it was to, since we're giving you the opportunity to build four new buildings and two new parking garages, that, you know, maybe you kind of carve some, you know, property on-site, and I think it would benefit the whole development since it's next to Lifetime, which is actually of huge sponsors of, you know, pickleball themselves, so you could actually, you could hold probably a national tournament, if not the national tournament, with outdoor courts right next to indoor courts, and you have all the third app facilities right there with hotels and restaurants, probably a good spot, at least from a northeast standpoint versus being down the south. So I think if everyone kind of thinks a little bit bigger picture, and not just kind of a centralized picture, that maybe we might open some more eyes up with kind of that approach. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you.
I have one little thing from, I just wanted to let everybody know that the Burlington Housing Authority is currently accepting applications for an affordable three-bedroom, single-family home that is available for rent for a veteran, and they have not been able to find a veteran.
Really?
And it's been empty, I believe.
Like a widow of a veteran? Or does it have to?
You know, I'm not sure with the qualifications, but certainly it's been empty for nearly a year, so I'm sure.
That's unfortunate.
Long time, so.
Can we also put that on our planning board website?
Yes.
That would be great, and we can boost that.
I think we, yeah, we already tried, Brenda, what we can repost it?
If we could.
Yeah.
Especially in the library for that one.
It's been lingering.
Okay, well, that's good to know.
Yeah, I wonder if at some point, if it's empty long enough, maybe they'll open it up to a bigger audience, yeah.
Well, they've had a few places that are vacant, and they've been sitting on them for a while, so they're really looking, this is the only one for veterans, but there's other apartments that are empty for quite some time, and they're trying to get some movement.
But you know, I'm so surprised.
So is this the housing?
Always told that there's not enough affordable housing.
Well.
And this is for purchase?
Well, this one here is for rent.
Okay.
But they also have purchases for, they've had both, and they haven't had much luck.
Is this, Madam Chair? Is this the Housing Authority or the Housing Partnership?
This is in the Housing Authority, but they've.
It's the current, current Housing Authority?
Yes.
It is?
Yes.
Thank you.
From what I understand, they're having issues with enough staff to help with turnaround, is from what I've understood, based on what I've talked with Mike Runyon, is that when somebody moves out, you got to redo the apartment or whatever condo or, you know, whatever, and I think they only have like one person on staff, so it's, I think that's kind of what the constraint is.
They need assistance rejuvenating the spaces, is that what, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think just basic maintenance, when somebody moves out, you know, you got to paint the walls, you got to clean this, you got to do that, you got to make sure everything's all set, and I think that that, that's what Mike Runyon has said to me, I don't know if that's the current situation, but that's what he's said has been an issue in the past.
Okay, good, yeah, I'll talk to Mike, maybe we can get some contractors out there and they can do some charity work for us, maybe.
That would be helpful, there's so many people looking for housing, and they've been empty, so.
Anyone else have anything? All right, folks, we have a new world record, it is not even seven forty.
Why you're the chair?
She's a good chair.
But you're in the meeting?
Do we still get paid?
Yes, yes, you'll get one chocolate chip cookie.
Second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night, folks.